Rachel Davies willingly perpetuated false information when she referred to an innocent voter as whose vehicle was blindsided as some "blank racist." She stoked racial resentment when she blindly accused members of the community of being ignorant, protester-bashing, racist, pig, blacks who live in our community. She referred to anyone who did not share her narrow-minded ideals as mentally ill, hateful, rednecks, and dumb blacks. Those are the words she chose to use without an ounce of evidence after she heard about a fed and vendor in an otherwise peaceful protest. Ms. Davies chose to believe the worst of her constituents in Lake Mills who elected her to the school board, as well as their children that she was elected to serve. For four years, this district required my son to sign a student-athlete code of conduct, committing that his actions, both in and out of school, would represent our district in a positive manner. Had he made the type of post she did, it would have resulted in swift, severe consequences that would have greatly affected his future. The elected adults on our school board should be held to an even higher standard. I request Ms. Davies' resignation, not because of her personal beliefs or her views of profanity. I request this resignation because she willingly accepted a narrative driven by emotion and incomplete facts. She rushed to judge an innocent woman and our community. Her poor judgment, rigid ideology, and her inability to interpret myth from fact undermines the effectiveness of the school board and the mission of the Lake Mills School District. Thank you.
Ms. Polly?
Jeanelle. Ms. Polly, can I call you one high street with no? I'm here to concern citizens who started that look because I have a lot of questions. Our country is divided, our community is divided, and I think each of us needs to take the step back to figure out exactly what it is we want, what we want from federal, state, and local governments, fellow citizens, police departments, public education, and what we want from this Board of Education. We won't always agree, but we must find common ground to move forward. Finding common ground requires us to be honest. We have to recognize the very common themes in our society and be honest about what we can do to fix those. We need to have facts, and we must seek truth and speak truth. As we had all seen over the past week, Rachel Davies did not seek truth. She clearly wasn't present for the situation she spoke of, didn't ask if there was video, didn't talk to the police beforehand, and didn't look at the facts. She rushed to judgment, further pushing a false narrative of a racist white lady hitting a protester's car. She even said it was on purpose, in all caps. I have to ask, how did Rachel know this was on purpose? Did she talk to the woman? What happens when the same situation plays out in this school, and the high schooler accused of racism, and there isn't a video? Will school administration, under Rachel Davies' leadership, be able to decipher facts from fiction to apply logic? This is why we are here, to determine if she can put aside her personal politics to seek truth. This isn't the first time Rachel's been called out on how she treats the members of this community. There's a history of name-calling, including a time she called a group of adult, tax, paying parents "tweeterers" because they disagreed with her. Our schools have policies about bullying, but yet we have a school board member, a vice president of the Board of Education, who is a bully. Unsure of what the rest of the community thought about Rachel's post, we created a poll on whether Rachel should resign. I received a private message that said the following, and I quote, "Now, I would like to fill out the poll on the No BS page, but want to make sure my name remains anonymous. My children are in the same class as them, fear it could potentially harm them in the future if my name comes up," end quote. As VP of this board, Rachel Davies is expected to ensure all open communication with all stakeholders. If residents of this community are fearing retaliation, it appears Rachel is unable to fulfill her duties. Per this statement said to me, she is unapproachable. VP of this board is not the place for her quick-to-judge attitude and her willingness to lash out. I'd like to point out that 20%, 1 in 5 kids, show symptoms of mental illness. I find it concerning that a school board member would make such a flippant remark about such a serious matter, but it does appear she was referring to those with Confederate plaques, and I've been told that there's a group of high schoolers with these same plaques. So my question is, since the Confederate flag is so offensive to Rachel and warranted 10 F bombs, is this board succeeding in educating students on the issues of today? Is her method of communicating with students and adults working? In summary, this was about the facts. I watched the Dersh cam video, the body cam videos today, there's a lot of them, and the evidence is clear. Rachel's rush to judgment was wrong. Why did Rachel believe the protester? Is it because the protester was black? We deserve answers. Why didn't she seek truth? It's been an entire week, there's been no explanation or apology. Rachel called someone racist whom she had never known, never even met, didn't even know her name. Our district deserves better.
Hi there. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Una Hugabum. I live at 670 Trustview Lane here in Lake Mills. I've been a member of the community in 23 and a half years, and been very active in the community for 20 plus years. Youth board, church group, youth table leader. I've served on the Board of, uh, Board of, uh, Field, I don't know what it's called. Zombie Board of Fields. So I've been a very active member of this community. I don't mean to pile on, because everything seems to be directed at Ms. Davies, and it should be at this point. I find that, I was out of town when this all came down. I had no knowledge of the incident, I had nothing, preconceived notion. I saw a post that was full of profanity, full of name-calling, full of things that just normally, as a professional, I don't use that word. I know if I use the words that she uses, I'd lose my job, like that. There'd be no question about it. And secondly, uh, the other part that bothers me is that, um, she's trying to lay the blame on somebody else. Somebody was childish, or a similar term was used, or taking a screenshot of her post. Maybe she didn't mean it to be public, but it was public. A professional does not do that. Somebody as part of this school board should not be doing that. Dating, listening to public, absolutely unprofessional. Not worthy of my role again. I can guarantee that. And then lastly, um, just the lack of judgment. I mean, making the call on something without knowing all the facts. Is she gonna do that on the board here? Is she gonna get all the facts before she makes the decisions? I'm not confident that she has the ability to do that. So at this time, I respectfully ask that Ms. Davies resign her position with the school board. If she's not willing to do that, I ask the school board to respectfully ask her to resign her position. Thank you.
Stephanie Thompson. Stephanie Thompson's? Indiana.
Thank you. Stephanie Thompson, Wisconsin State College, Lake Mills. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to comment. Lake Mills area school district is fortunate that the school board administration is in support of the arts. Parents look forward to and expect that support will continue no matter what construction format or platform it may be. I have been involved with Lake Mills Music Parents Organization since 2006, president since 2008, and have seen the benefits of this program. The Music Parents Organization raises 1,000 to 10,000 families to support the middle school and high school, which includes, but is not limited to, designated music parents, such as parade attendants to live performance at the Met Fracker, high school music performance tours to Florida and New York, middle school and high school scholarships, solo ensembles. I am a parent and have three daughters, who have been and are involved in choir, show choir, band, orchestral, solo ensembles, jazz band, group, and charity awards. They have benefited from music and the arts by growing self-confidence among close individuals who have heard also that music can be creative, helpful, to instruct clubs, plays, other mechanics, plays, other effects, like hat offering. I'm here to express that it is vital to music and the arts in student education, especially now that COVID and COVID-19 have begun. It's important to note that Wisconsin Public Instruction, school district standards code FBI 8.012J4, states that music instruction shall be provided. The Wisconsin Music Educators Association released the COVID-19 statement stating that all children deserve peaceful access to incredible and well-rounded education that includes high-quality study of music and the arts, regardless of the mode of delivery or location, or need for. It is not optional or extrapground. Music and the arts are an integral part of every child's education. Research has shown the therapeutic use of music in the arts. Amidst COVID-19 crisis, music is playing an integral role in living our experience, helping us in terms of stress, connecting us with others, no matter what the platform connects. Continuing to support students in music and arts to provide lifelong benefits, this individual and members of the school. Thanks again for the opportunity to comment, and sharing with the copies of my statements that Wisconsin music is some leader and our essential factor for this position. Thank you.
Andrew Grant, 426 Central. I'm a parent of two young children and have also been a classroom ESL teacher in the local district for the last 12 years, and run six elementary. My question for you is this: Why are some members of our community so offended by moms sharing some racism to help adults, young children, and the race they want? In the aftermath of George's voice, my five-year-old was reading the news stories that were upsetting and scary. I have one of my two students who's of color reaching out to the spirits of sad life. As educators, you don't expect anything from anger, but I try. Our students are armed, and we will work to support and educate them whenever needed. I have to say, I was disappointed and concerned that there was no statement or support for students from our school district following the death of George Clinton. I realize that I teach a math system that is more diverse, so reactions may be different. But my school and district came out with a statement immediately condemning the actions of police officers involved, highlighting their anti-racism speech, and standing in solidarity toward my families. I contributed to supporting families at my school math school by creating a Google app with stories that help parents gain purpose and fall all of the ways we have been in our nation, knowing the tragedy. These resources are essential to help us process a varied array of events and social action. My schooling, this document, and other resources are essential to the family. Given that I work in an urban district focused on this work and my role in helping develop resources for families, too, I had plenty of ways to address this issue for my own child, but what about parents who don't? After continuing to get nothing from the school that is on this topic, I reached out to people named Thompson to let her know what I compiled. She was more than welcome to offer to support all my local families. She was happy to share the families and also asked if I was comfortable with her sharing my name as doctor. I said, of course, what I was sharing was not. I appreciated Ms. Thompson talking with me as a concerned parent, and appreciated her willingness to offer resources for families, maybe struggling to find words, address topics. I'm an educator, she's an educator, striving to collaborate and share resources for the best interest of our community. It is evident from recent events in our community that these conversations with our children and students and with each other are needed. I have heard from parents who are raising or have raised children of color in our community have work to do. There is some racism, bias, microaggressions against people of color are occurring every day. As I raise my white male children, I will do everything I can to raise them in a way that they know, they know history, recognize the privilege, and use that privilege to make our society more equitable. I stand by all of my actions, statements, and sentiments, and will continue to advocate learning, understanding, collaboration, and changes for a greater role in racism, which include our schools, and I encourage our district.
Hi, I'm Rita Longsham. I've worked in this community for 25 years, I actually live in White Water. Um, I am sickened by the support given to the group who came into our community to bully and rally for no reason except to create racism where it doesn't exist. There's a board member that supports that group, there's a board member that is not a role model because of that support and other things, and the board member has called Lake Mills citizens, all of us, all of you, ignorant, white, Confederate, flag-flying, racist, fake bastards, redneck, dumbass, men, hillfuckers, racist, whites, cowards. Does it not just swear? And this post was on the, from what I saw on the community forum page. This is unacceptable behavior for a school board member. You cannot condone this behavior or her attitude towards the community or towards the police who protect us. She and others are supporting paid protests, who outright lied about the events on July 7th, and I want to thank Nick's self for his statement of truth and the video of the car accident. Then we all knew the truth, what happened. We will speak out. We will now hold people and businesses in this community accountable for their actions. We will not call races, because we are not racist, we never were racist. There is one race, the human race. We are asking for a resignation, as Katie does not tolerate racism or hatred, you have shown. We will not allow a person like that to save our children. Thank you.
Carol E., Hope my phone can reach you, I hope I can help. Just so you know, on tap, there's kind of less than our families, we've all graduated from Lake Mills High School. I bet my daughters graduate from Lake Mills High School. Um, family, some graduated from Lake Mills. But equal, thank you for all I need to be here tonight. It's sad indeed that we are through the crisis. The actions in the words of a few have caused her to be flooded with hate and disregard for the members of our community. I believe she put herself as part of the problem and not the solution. Moral fiber, the strength and ability to do what you think is right, even in difficult circumstances? How can we instill moral fiber into the youth of this school district? When as I walk down the hall, there's a banner that says, "Class of 2021, Bully Free Zone." They've been hanging in this school for years. I actually had daughters bullied by psycho people, but a different situation. We need the school district to step up and hold people accountable. This is unacceptable behavior for someone who is holding an elected office from the school district of Lake Mills Education. I would like to say that we have a great point for our students' talent, a great EMF, and a great choir department. And for that girl to put out there that she was disrespected by, harping with you and our volunteers, was really hit hard. I tried over years supporting these groups, and I really, as it was, made me mad, but I'm not going to hold that on me. I'm asking you all, as Board of Education, to take a good look at why you ran this education board. Is this where we want our education to go, where it is now, if we can better our future Thank you.
Jean Lynch. If you could also state your address, please, I'd be interested in asking that.
Sure, I do have tickets for all the board members. Jean Lynch, 16, went to Madison Street, Lake Mills. Good evening, I'm looking for the opportunity to speak. I would like to, there would be an opportunity, a board, to receive some specific excerpts of the board's policy manual and bylaws that I would like to read. I am a local returning woman, and I'm also a resident, two children, seven children. I too have been made aware of one of the school board members' expression of public comments on Facebook. I do not believe that this was a one-off. There have been multiple incidents that were cited with people. One that has not been addressed was a very public statement on COVID, returning school. I point you to the first policy, the public expression board member, 14030.1, and I read in part, "Therefore, board members should, when writing or speaking at School Matters, on School Matters on social media, to the media, legislature, and other officials, make it clear that their views do not necessarily reflect the board or of their colleagues on the board." It is my understanding that while it is stated in that statement that this individual was being concerned, in parents, and whatnot, I think the language of that and the position on whether schools should start in the fall also violates board member ethics on the second edition, section 144.2. Recognize, and must certainly recognize, they should endeavor to make policy decisions only after the full discussion and publicly held orders. To my knowledge, there has been no publicly held order where you all have extensive discussions of COVID and whether this school should open the fall. So I find that to be another violation. I highlighted all of these in the paper, going on to J, make no private action that will compromise the board or administration, and respect the confidentiality of information and privilege under applicable law. I find the communication, especially the one following a protest, really does compromise the board, compromise the individualism of the board, integrity. Further, remember always, the first and greatest concern must be educational welfare of students attending public schools. I took it on to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, the First Amendment, parallel to my abilities, and I fully support everybody's right to be educated. However, there are bylaws that routine to this board, every single one of the elected officials on it. Finally, sexual and other forms of harassment. The Board of Education, and I will be finishing. Other forms of harassment include verbal or nonverbal expression related to race, gender, age, religion, disability, pregnancy, or sexual orientation. I think it was discussed in other people's presentations, that there was harassment, there was also offensive speech, which is highlighted in here as well. Ominous, very offensive speech. So I asked the board to put with their own dialogue and make some decisions and call for action. We have these reports for you, thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Tammy Jack, two, first of the draft. My husband Jim and I are parents of two students who attend Lake Mills School District. One is in high school, one is in middle school. We live in Lake Mills and we love it here. However, I am greatly disturbed and angry by the action of Rachel Davies, the vice president of the Lake Mills School Board. She wrote on a social media page that was public at the time, a series of comments that were profane, bigotry, prejudice, and expressed hatred toward our community after an incident on Friday, July 3rd. As a member of the school board, Rachel Davies has obviously shown she is not fit to influence or make decisions concerning our children. This conduct is unbecoming, unprofessional, unacceptable, and nothing more than a temper tantrum, of which we would not tolerate if our own children were to do this. As a representative of the school board, she is to be held to a higher standard of decorum and should be a role model for our children. We, as parents of the Lake Mills community, do not condone nor tolerate prejudice, bigotry, and hatred in our own children, and it should not be tolerated by any school board member. She must be held accountable. Therefore, we respectfully request that you, as a board, ask for her resignation effective immediately. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Nick South, over at 434 East Lake Street. I'm also the police chief for the city of Lake Mills, and I just, for Paul's disclosure, I've had a conversation with Ms. Davies and Mrs. Polly about, that's a very unofficial one. I thank the board for spending some time with us, talking about this issue, so I can have, you know, a comprehensive view of it. And I'm not going to choose the side that is out of my purview, but what I can tell you is regardless of how our community moves forward, I have hope. As I become more familiar with the dynamics of this issue, it occurs to me that none of the people involved with this will stand for racial disparity. All parties were passionate about ensuring equality and not wanting racism in our community. That gives me hope. This is our common ground, and this is why I came here to speak about, and to build upon. This is an opportunity for all of us to unite. We cannot go back to, back in time, we cannot change anything, we can only move forward. Many people in this room have done many good things in this community, and I have no doubt there are many more positive initiatives to come from all of you. We will make more headway if we all paddle in the same direction, if we work as a team. The last couple of weeks have been an educational experience for us all, good and bad. We learned a lot about false narratives and trust. I don't know anyone who's not shocked by disparity between the claim and what actually happens. What scares me is how often does this occur around our country? What is the real narrative that never come out? What if there's been no squad video camera? Where have we been as a community, and I'm thankful we don't have to find out, but what about the next time? What have we learned? I encourage people to get involved in our various community groups in some fashion to make change and learn. Education, communication, and action are all good things, and it will make us stronger. Many hands make polite work. We all have different perspectives, so it's important to be open-minded and not be dismissive. Listening to someone with different perspective for all our groups become an echo chamber, and then it is one group against the other, and that distracts us from the common goal. As I stand here before you, I think about over the last month, how many times I've spoken and met with media or made Facebook posts. It's hard to speak publicly, the second you step into the spotlight, people find a way to bring you down. They could keep each word choice and miss the bigger message. But the issue here is too important to remain silent. As a leader in this community, silence can speak volumes also. That is why I'm here, and that is why many of you are here. Equity and justice for all is our common goal. As chief, I've made this request several times publicly, I will do so again today. I seek ideas and input for how we can be better. I look to the school board as leaders in this community, as well as addressing issues in the school. I believe we have a great school district, education staff, and I'm looking forward to working with Dr. Olson. Thank you all for your service in community on this board, and thank you all for inviting me to speak, and I look forward Thank you all for inviting me to speak, and I look forward to working with you all to move our community forward.
I respectfully pass. All my comments have already been held appreciated, and in the interest of the business of the board, I pass them. Thank you. We've got several that signed up, and I can't quite make up your last name, Carrie. Is that Carrie? Jennifer Jones.
Hi, Jennifer Jones, 402 Water Street, Lake Mills. I am a teacher at Kellmore High School and a parent of two students here at Kellmore, or sorry, at Lake Mills. I want to say that I support our police because I am the wife of a retired police officer and disabled Navy veteran, and I support all of their work, the work part of that family and all enforcement. I do not support the actions of one state that is there in our community. However, I love Lake Mills, and we chose to live here for a purpose. I've lived in Wisconsin for 10 years, and Lake Mills for over eight years. I'm originally from California, and I will say with all along my heart, in the last 10 years of living, and in particular in Lake Mills, I see more racism projected against people of color in the 10 years that I have been here, over the 35 years I've lived in California. I love this town, and I really do. But when I have friends who tell me, "Oh, that's a great little town to have, but it's for color," I can't, I wouldn't be able to believe them. It gets me fine. When I'm told by people in the district that children are allowed to come to school where they're affected by paraphernalia, it gets me fine. When people get upset about a very emotional rant by a board member and are not upset about the men that are flagged reading their engines, the high school student spoke about her desire for racial justice, and people don't get upset about that intimidation within our community, but they're upset about the ghost of a mother of children, of a mother of people of color, the wife of a black man, it gives me pause of wanting to stay in this community. My husband and I have agreed that if we had children of color, we would not live here. And it breaks my heart that we do live in a place where my friends and family and people that I care about would choose not to live. I'm confused as to the outrage and anger over this incident as opposed to all of the other things that are happening. If Rachel Davies or anyone on the board is pushed out of their positions because of outrage over this, then I don't know what to say. And maybe we don't even care, but that's fine as a parent, and I implore you everyone to take over this situation.
Here we Polly.
She's not, she said she's not speaking.
Oh, okay, isn't here that? Scott, you're carrying the board.
Mike, thank you.
David Klein.
Excuse me, people in the back in here, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so I understand that there are several people who signed.
There are two that you missed on the, there are two that are missed that were on the electronic list. One is Rebecca Johnson, and one is Ben Rappel.
Okay, Rebecca Johnson.
Totally nervous, I've seen so many people. But I am a resident of Lake Mills, children, children, children. On July 3rd, here, in our town, which involves a white man, which is untenanted as expected, correct? Please believe that was something, regarding Lake Mills, maybe we saw the actual coverage. Unfortunately, there were people that jumped onto that whole story, that those folks that did it, from it. One of such people was Rachel Davies, shipping upon herself, writing posts on Facebook, just going, "Please, please, Lake Mills, our inability to follow her emotions is very unsettling." I feel that a person who holds a position with dignity, especially on the board, should hold themselves at a higher level of composure to judge and condemn an entire community for one person. To that end, to see that does not show her ability to be a person for someone that are young minds should look up to. I myself am a mother of four. I myself have worried for my children. I, along with my husband, teach our children always respectful, understanding, and accepting to strive to always look at all sides of the situation in private self. We do not teach, except anyway, we are there, and all those words that surround them, so white, very hurt. And we teach them not to judge others. These are just very painful things that we teach our children, and this has shown that we can teach that now. For those reasons, our husband and sister-in-law, she doesn't like to talk to her father. I do not think that she holds a fear in our guys.
But this email is important to have a clear tone. The Lake Mills School District Board. My understanding is that there are area citizens who are expressing disapproval of Miss Davies, seeking resignation, sent her voice in. I have seen the video that prompted her post, that follows her post. Here is the short version, why I support Miss Davies. She made an impassioned statement about her feelings on race relations in Lake Mills from her personal Facebook account. While she is a public figure by virtue of electric role on the school board, she did not communicate as a representative of the Lake Mills School District Board. She did not call out any specific individual. She broadly spoke out against people that advocated white supremacy, white Confederate flag with intent to intimidate, and people that expressed hate in public form. No reasonable individual would feel targeted by her communication, and if they do, they are self-identifying with racism and hate. I absolutely believe that a person can be distressed and disturbed by racist communication and intimidation in the community, and also serve the entire community in good faith. Though I don't know Miss Davies personally, I believe that she ran for board position to serve all the children of Lake Mills School District. Having passionate positions on race relations does not disqualify one from public office. In fact, I believe it could help people of color feel safer at school. I believe the actions of the vocal minority seeking Miss Davies' resignations are designed to intimidate, silence her voice, silence the voices of others that would speak out against racism, and ultimately drive her family out of town. I am aware of Miss Davies' personal connection with issues of race. I also have a personal connection as my African-American daughter attended Lake Mills High School. She experienced overt racism from fellow students in her time here. As a parent, I understand Miss Davies' pain and anger. It is a helpless feeling when you can't make the world a safe place for your child. While the video that prompted her Facebook post misrepresented facts, the fact is that racism is real in our community. People are driving around with Confederate flags with intent to intimidate. If you speak out against racism on the Facebook, Lake Mills Community Network page, you will be attacked by people in our community and threatened. This has happened to me. I believe her post came from a very personal place of pain and fear for her family, and I cannot fault her for that. On the other hand, I believe people that seek to silence Miss Davies do so to maintain a racist status quo and to intimidate. They protect no one but racists, white supremacists, and bullies. Resignation is not needed. A recall election is not needed. If Miss Davies does not serve the community well, she will not win reelection when her term is up.
Okay, that concludes the, all those who wish to speak. So we will move then to the third item on our agenda, which are our administrative reports. Most of you who wish to leave will pause for a bit. So we will move into the administrative reports. Mr. Rendall, the Middle School Assistant Principal and Director of Summer School, Summer School update.
One second. All right, Nate, you're unmuted.
First off, I want to thank the board. Can everyone hear me? Good?
It's just, it's just audio through here. You can hear him, okay? Go ahead, Nate.
Okay. Chris, I can't see the board. I can only see two people. If you want to move that camera, please. There we go. All right, first off, I want to thank the board for everything that you do. Summer School update, and we just finished up our first session at the end of June. We had 237 students attending online virtual summer school. On average, they took three courses each. Couple highlighted courses, I wanted to say some big thank yous out. We started a nutrition and recovery class for our high school students this year that kind of coincided with their strength and conditioning and speedy agility. And it was Audrey Vincenzi, our fax teacher, she teamed up with Jennifer Jesky from Optimal Physical Therapy in town, and they've been doing a fantastic job of providing students with some information on nutrition and also on recovery. Our food classes are doing awesome. I see lots of pictures of kids cooking at home, helping out with their parents, and getting their measurements and things like that going on. Our gaming academy class was fantastic. I saw a motivational game that one of our students created, which I shared on social media. And our remedial programs are hitting a lot of our students. They're getting about a half hour, one-on-one or two-on-one small group instruction with a teacher, working on some skills. Some things to look forward to, second session, our virtual theater is going to do a virtual production, a live online production, and it's going to be taped and recorded and be able to put out. And our short choir is going to do a piece where they're going to take their vocals and put them together to make a video that they will share out with everyone. Our strength program is in the Wellness Center, lifting, second session, and our remedial classes continue to work with our students that have the highest needs going forward. So that is the update on summer school. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rendall.
Thank you.
The next report is from Mr. Steve Consonine, High School Athletic, High School Assistant Principal and Director of Athletics, and he had on the athletic department.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me all right? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So we've had the students back in the school starting July 1st with our return to play, with our contact days, the plan that we installed. The students are doing a really good job. We have very strict protocols from their entry point to their pre-screening questions. We take attendance every day. If they were to hit any of the pre-screening questions, which has to do with fever, contact with someone who tested positive or showed symptoms, we send them away. We haven't had to send anybody away. Our students, you know, we didn't know how they would react to some of our restrictions, but they're doing a great job. Our coaches are also doing a great job. We gave them neck buffs, and when they're in close contact or in that six feet space, they are pulling that up over their mouth. Every sport has started with track using their days tonight, so it's really been great. We've been getting great feedback. It's very positive, the way things are going for, should we have sports in the fall? And with that, I guess the kind of update with that is that the WIAA at their June Board of Control Meeting said that they are committed to putting together postseason tournaments if teams want them, but it's going to rely on local control. So right now, our local control is Jefferson County, and we're working with everybody, the athletic directors in all of Jefferson County. We're meeting tomorrow to kind of look over plans. Obviously, nothing is finalized, but we want to have consistency through our county to make sure that what we're doing aligns with everybody else as far as spectators, entry exits, locker rooms, there's a lot to take in. And then along with our facilities, if you've seen, we've been doing some updates to our LCAT stadium, but down by the weight room and our new gym doors, so we're pretty excited with everything that's going on. That's what I have for athletics.
I would like to thank you, Mr. Consonine, for the upgrades to the stadium. They're quite impressive. Thank you very much.
Thanks. We're pretty excited. We think graduation, which is what I'm talking about next, is going to be a pretty special day, I think.
Yeah, your timing is exquisite.
Yeah, so talking about graduation, I'm going to speak for Mr. Vogel here. Every, as you probably have seen the plans, every student, which we will have 82 walking, will get four tickets. We have a map laid out that's pretty detailed. We moved the stage back. It was going to be about the 50-yard line, but we moved it back. We're allowing families to sit in the bleachers, and we're going to rope off areas along the track and also kind of along the field away from the students. All the students will be at least seven to eight feet apart in chairs. They'll meet in the tennis courts. We are strongly encouraging masks. We are asking students to wear them, and if they can't, don't have one, they will be provided. But we're really excited. We think things are going to go well with staff. We're going through a walkthrough on Friday morning to kind of make sure everything's okay. But again, we're excited that we're able to do this in face with our students, because I know it's important to them. There are going to be some things that aren't traditional. As far as our music will be, our recorded music and some of that things, but we'll still have our speakers, and we'll still be able to give them the diploma. And we've, I guess you could say, we've looked at a lot of details in this.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, Ms. Thompson. Student academic standards and the first reading of the element used to school students.
Good evening. I have two quick updates, one from the curricular director's side. As you said, this is the time As you said, I, this is the time of year that we look at our academic standards for the approval from the school board. We utilize the Wisconsin academic standards for all of our content areas. And all of, um, the standards are on our school website for the community to review along with the scope and sequence of all of our content areas. So the under, um, when you go to our district webpage, go to curriculum, and you can see all of those, um, all of the content standards laid out and the scope and sequence. Attached in the board docs are, um, the core content areas for your review. Then the second update is, uh, my principal hat for the elementary school. We have our student handbook, um, again, that annual review. There are no big changes to our handbook this year, other than just, um, some name changes, phone numbers, um, room number type updates. Any questions?
Very nice. Thank you very much. Ms. Baller, middle school principal, for the first reading of the middle school.
All right, just trying to get that all figured out there. Uh, just a quick update, like Amanda, um, attached to the board docs is our, uh, middle school handbook. Um, I don't think there's any major, major updates. Um, it was really nice to be able to go through, uh, with Mr. Grundle this year and, um, make some, um, some slight changes. Uh, you'll note in, um, the documents that anything that is grayscale'd or, uh, has a strike through is a change, so you can note those changes that way. Um, and, um, sometimes I get comments on format, um, but I won't be finalizing the format until, uh, the board approves the changes, um, at the next meeting, and then we will go back and do all the formatting changes. So, um, that, that should be, um, pretty much the update for our middle school handbook this year. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Ms. Parker, Director of Business Services, Budget Adjustment.
So, um, later on in the agenda, there will be action on the 2019-20 budget. We're, um, recommending some budget adjustments. We're almost to the end of, um, we're truly at the rest of the year. We're still doing some adjustments, but, um, one of the changes is because of an accounting, having to report differently, um, the cost of multi-district. I mean, the street district, sorry, the outdoor facility, uh, because part of that cost is coming from the fund balance. So I made sure everything is recorded in the 10 fund for the overage as opposed to the total cost in the 49 fund and transferring to the 49 fund. The other adjustments are, um, because of some adjustments due to inter-fund, I mean instructional service payments, which is the test of, um, open enrollment out. Amounts are a little less and something like private school, uh, too, is a little less. And then there's also some highlights in the 127, um, and, um, again, because of some services that, um, with the COVID, we had some reduction in costs, like with physical therapy, for example. So I just had outlined in more detail the finance and, like, some of the reductions in our costs. And also, we were, we did receive foundational, uh, 122. And then, I guess that's all I want to highlight. Went through it in a more detailed finance, but we're asking you about the budget. Later on in the agenda, and then that will go to, uh, the other item I just want to highlight. Two weeks, we do have the annual budget hearing. The budget hearings start at 7:00 and the annual budget starts at 7:30, and that's supposed to be, you know, mandatory in our.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Dr. Olson, we need to welcome you to your first order meeting here, um, district. And thank you very much for being here. We're looking forward, we're looking forward to, um, working with you as you go down the road.
I'm really inspired by everything that's experienced in the community. I'm really honored and blessed to be working for all of you. And, hey, I just felt like I've been so welcomed, not only by the district, um, staff, but by the community and the teachers. And I'll talk a little bit about my entry plan with people that I'm going to be met with in the community. So thank you for letting me serve for children. So a couple of updates here. Obviously, lots to do to get ready for the school year. And as you watch, um, on TV, information changes weekly. So we're trying to make decisions, um, based on the information we have at hand. But at some point, it's kind of dropped in phase really before the 18th day. So we did, um, surveyed the staff and our families a couple of weeks ago. And I think the interesting note is the superintendent's staff survey families, right away in June, had different results. I think from what we're starting to see now, just as information's evolved. So, um, to start with the staff survey, we had 199 responses on the staff survey. And we asked the staff, what was their preference for opening schools in September? And it was, um, split a little bit. Um, almost 48% of the staff preferred starting the school on modified schedule with a blended learning format. About 36% advocated for starting the school year face-to-face. And 16% advocated for a complete virtual start. And we asked the staff that, um, if we did need to limit the number of students in the building, what would be the preferred method? Would it be a split A.M.-P.M. schedule, um, an A.B.-K.A. rotation, where students would come on Monday, Tuesday, and another cohort would come on Thursday, Friday, with, um, school Wednesday cleaning? If we just have elementary students, commonly use the space to educate our elementary students and, um, middle school, high schools, virtual. So we put out a couple of different scenarios, and almost 52% said that if we did have to do some type of, you know, modified schedule, that the A/B schedule would be preferred. And then we asked the question about what their preference was for PPE, for the personal protective equipment, and how they felt about wearing such items as face masks, face shields, a face buff, gloves, gown. And in general, uh, high percentages of staff were in favor of wearing face masks. And face shields, just, we did get our order of, um, face masks from DPI, which every school got their allocation. We got three bells and face masks due to our students, so AC pit, and also six thermometers. We did, um, also order face shields already for each one of our staff members, so that's, um, not just teachers, but, um, care professionals, civilians, so on and so forth. And we also did order face buffs for all of our staff, even before the survey results came out. Just because, as you know, ordering anything now to get ready for the start of the school year is, is getting, um, pretty competitive. It's, it's hard to get things here on time. And even if, for some reason, we didn't start right away on September 1st, we are planning for any scenario at any time during the school year. So we just wanted to be prepared, and it did not look like COVID going away anytime soon. So just to have that equipment, um, did order a good supply of gloves and gowns. Also, just for working in health rooms or any staff that would be subject to, um, other, I guess, circumstances for that report. We are, Wendy and I are also working on, um, Lexiglas shields in the various offices and also looking at, um, specific teaching scenarios where if we were back face-to-face, that it would warrant having a shield. For example, uh, our speech teachers, where it's impossible to wear a mask, or specialized teachers, where they would have to have close contact with students, where they would need to see their lips and mouth to be able to educate them. So we are working, um, to outfit the buildings to make sure that things are safe. The last question we asked staff was what professional development? Would you need to start the school year and by far, um, you know, education and safety calls? And we are working on that. And then, um, the second highest was supporting students' social, emotional health as well. They've been out of the school since March 13th, so, um, a lot of things have happened. So we want to make sure that we're prepared for that. Parent survey, we actually had 957 responses, so a good, um, response to that. We had about 47% of our families, about 450 people, saying that they prefer to send their child back to school face-to-face five days a week in fall. About 34% said that they prefer to start on an A/B schedule. And then we had, um, not quite 12% saying that they would prefer a full virtual option. So that, that was some good data, um, to get back. We'd like to actually, um, do another follow-up, um, survey, really trying to narrow in some of the choices to help side our plan a little bit more fully. Once again, we, we did, um, ask parents about all the different, um, different kinds of schedules. That if we did start the school face-to-face five days a week, what would be the preferred schedule? By an overwhelming majority, parents prefer the A/B rotation. A lot of parents commented, like, keep my kids together. I think, you know, when you're planning for childcare, it's the last thing you want, and the siblings split apart. I think I would assume just from talking with my own kids, um, who have kids of their own, that I know it's a little easier for childcare when you're looking to hold a childcare person and continue to plan your capacity, um, child. Moving on, we did, um, ask about specific, um, PPE measures, whether they would send their child to school, um, if it was in place, or if they would absolutely not send their child if it wasn't in place. And they asked questions like additional cleaning measures, of course, that was very high. Implementing hand washing, um, routines during, uh, the school year. Whether, you know, it was important to have cafeteria food individually packaged, that wasn't as high a requirement. And then, um, requiring students to wear masks, and that, that was even almost across the board. With some fundamentally opposed and some really strongly suggesting, um, we do that. And then we asked, what are the high priorities for children? Once again, very high, um, as far as advancing students' education, and setting to their social, emotional needs, and then also protecting students' physical health. The one that wasn't a high priority, a lot of those four, was getting support for trauma-related pandemic. We, while we had some that sent them to top priority, that wasn't as high as those other three areas. Then we asked about transportation, about, you know, how they felt about, um, having their child transported. Majority said they already transport their child to school. And one interesting note was that we had, um, almost 13% that said they currently ride the bus and they plan to ride the bus again in the fall. About 9% said they were sure because they didn't know what our safety precautions were going to be. And, like, every school district, I think, the transportation issue is probably one of the trickiest ones to solve right now. Wendy and I have been in constant meetings with food services, transportation, and maintenance, really working through all those issues as far as reading up on CDC guidelines. And then the guidelines that the DPI is starting to put out that are unique to all of those areas. But things, things evolve. Week to week, we are meeting with, um, Mike Thompson, the deputy superintendent, and, uh, from the state. And then, um, we actually had, uh, open, a comment where people could just read, um, comments and, um, boy, a few, okay, I have a second number, probably the two hundred comments or so. People just, you know, on both sides of the issue, you know, coming back face-to-face, not coming back face-to-face, uh, PPE, transportation, um, how we're working through the schedule. So, um, really good input, also a lot of input about if we do have a virtual program, they would expect some different things in our virtual instruction, which I think most school districts are looking at, and everybody was saying, sort of, a bit, rather quickly, um, last March. So, and that is something that Amanda Thompson is already working on as far as, um, that virtual option and what does that look like. I think regardless of our plan, um, I can say with some assurance that we will have a virtual option, regardless, so we just know there are some kids that will not be able to come back to school. There are some kids who are uncomfortable sending their kids back to school face-to-face. And so we are planning that option, um, for sure. But it will look different than what we saw in terms of virtual, which, I gotta say, I was watching the Lake Mills virtual instruction because being a principal in elementary building, I was watching what you were doing very closely. And I was very impressed that, at what Lake Mills was doing for virtual instructions. Second part, um, actually, committee structure, just to comment on. So what we've been doing is, um, meeting with all the principals. The principals have been meeting with their, um, uh, team leaders in their buildings. They were bringing the feedback back to the admin team. And we've actually widened our circle in the administrative team meetings to include, um, Chris has been sitting in on those, Tony, our school nurse, has been sitting in. We've been, Pam Roseanne, as far as our registrar, sitting in on the meetings. Ben, um, with the PNA rec, because we're still looking at, um, before and after school childcare, and making sure that, um, what we're doing with the prep program lines of what we're doing during school day. So it is a very wide circle, um, that is meeting weekly. And then, um, on top of that, Wendy and I are meeting with food services, transportation, and, um, with maintenance to go through the specific parts of, of the plan. So the admin team will be meeting again with their leadership team meetings. They'll be going back and forth, and the goal is to bring, um, our recommendations to the board and board workshop, um, next Monday, to walk through the very specific parts of that plan, so we can see the things that needly changed, um, you know, what did, what else do we need to consider? And then with the goal of having the plan approved, um, on July 27th, which would actually be a special board meeting because our annual meeting and our budget hearing is scheduled for that night. On top of that, schedule a very brief, um, board meeting. The goal is to get that information out to families right after that July. And we'll, we'll, I'll be sending out a letter, actually, tomorrow, the families' update. But really with more specific parts of that plan, so that parents have the entire month of August to choose what is best for their child, to make plans if they need other plans, and just ask questions for us. So we will be working through the communication phase of that, um, throughout August. I, I'm going to say, I apologize. I have told Wendy, like, 10 times, I wish I would have started this job July, June 1st, because, hey, it's, it's a lot of planning, and, and I know Pam was working very vigorously on the plan. And it's just coming in midstream, um, and feel like I'm just a little bit behind. So we're working hard to catch up. Along with that, so you have attached the school nurses' report. It's really just a compilation of, of students that she served and different kinds of, um, cases of, um, dealing with health issues through the school year. I can say Tony's been a valuable resource through this process and, um, probably communicates with me daily. So, I don't know if there's any questions about the nurse report yet. Okay, same with Ben. Ben has, um, worked really hard. He has his rec application report, um, there in board docs. And I would say too, uh, he'll communicate, um, with Wendy and himself almost daily and really just working through, um, the scenarios of the rec program and bringing kids back in small groups and, um, so far, there's, we just had to give a few warnings that they about doing some social discipline. And, you know, kids tend to foster together, and we're trying to remind people to, um, be careful of that. But other than that, we, um, we have a few questions about the screening and stuff.
What is the, uh, what type of feedback are you getting? Do you get together with the other superintendents of Jefferson County? What, what, is there a failing feeling or is there still a lot of uncertainty? And is there a continuum of options allowing for choice?
Yeah, I, I, you know, we have weekly meetings with the Jefferson County superintendents. And for those of you that don't know, um, as soon as Pam retired, Pam Striker retired here, she was hired by Jefferson County to be a liaison for all the Jefferson County school districts as we work through our plans, so that, um, there's seven of us or how many schools are in the county that all of us are reaching out to the county and inundating them, um, with questions. So she is kind of our, our go-to and following thing, so that the county is really speaking directly with her. The goal is really to have somewhat similar plans. They're not going to be identical, but really, when you look at, um, you know, They're not going to be identical, but really when you look at, you know, eliminating competition among school districts and open enrollment, you know, there's just going to be a lot of issues to work here. So we're really trying to have some strong commonalities across the county here as far as school districts. So we are planning to work together to come out with a public release, a public statement on behalf of our superintendents as far as what the plans will look like, the maintenance of that. But I would say the majority, you know, will have some type of virtual option. Looking at the different face-to-face scenarios and that planning together, even those meetings, like every time we get together, it's like just another layer because we're watching public cases across the county really closely, watching CDC recommendations. Things do change from the week. So that is the goal. It's nice to have those other superintendents also, Selena. And with that, it's not just the school district, old school districts, but also almost all local schools in the county as well, as they deal with this. So it's nice to have a nice working relationship already. That kind of leads me into the entry plan. So a little different entry plan because we're trying to speed things up, but I'm trying to meet with as many of the community leaders as possible. And that, I think, this summer is more urgent than any other summer. We're trying to make sure philosophically that we're on the same page. They know where I'm coming from, I know where they're coming from. So I was already able to meet with Steve Wilkie, who gave me a nice tour of City Hall and introduced me to the majority of the staff that work there, including the city attorney. I've already met with Chief Silk, the 20-day strike. I am still working, scheduling one with the fire chief, the meeting set up with the principal from St. Paul's, even though I've been talking with him quite a bit on our torch chat weekly. We were able to meet with St. Whistler through Cape. I already should be inducted tomorrow into Rotary, I'm assuming. So it's nice to be part of Rotary. That will be my third meeting tomorrow. And then really just meeting with district staff here. I've met with a couple of teachers, but I was able to meet with Julian Russo, president of the Allen. And then just other teachers have reached out to me and just wanted to do a virtual chat or whatever. So I've been in a meeting with way the few people. And then on top of it, Megan and I scheduled an initial meeting with Scott Brown, who is our new policy rep. So we were able, and I've known Scott for years and years, so we were able to get on the same page and see where we're at with policy provisions. So we'll keep moving quickly through that plan. I guess the biggest thing I wanted community leaders to know is that I'm working side by side with everybody who's not the city version of the school district, which I know you don't have here in Lake Mills. But that I really want to be that strong ally within the city leaders to move forward throughout the school year.
Thank you very much. Sounds like quite a good. Mr. Rado, I know you've been very patient, but as the official person, we appreciate you.
Yeah, three thank you letters came us through the district. And first, it's from Pam. All of us and the staff for the retirement.
Yep.
Also a thank you from Liz Body for that you did retire. And the last was from the families of Herb and Forgie, one of the superintendents.
The next item is our consent agenda. And I'm asking this time, I'm not sure, if there's any item on the consent agenda that we're going to discuss separately. Okay, those items on the consent agenda, I include. Minutes of the June 8th regular board meeting. Approval of the June 8 finance committee proceedings. Approval of the June 22nd special board of education meetings. Approval of the treasures report. Approval of vouchers and invoices. Approval of support staff letter of resignation. Approval of support staff letters of assignment. I would ask for a motion for approval of the consent. I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Move in seconded. Questions or comments? More questions? May we please have a roll call vote?
Rachel Davies, I'm Don Delaney.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Robert Tupperio.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the action items. First item is the approval of the budget adjustments for the 2009 school year that Ms. Parker mentioned before. Is there any more of that intro you'd like to provide?
No, it's just that this is something like every year of time.
I move the board approve the budget adjustments.
Move in seconded. And we discussed this in the finance committee as well. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Rachel Davies.
I'm.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
I'm.
David Rado.
Aye.
Robert Tupperio.
Aye.
The next item is the approval of individuals authorized to maintain bank accounts in safety deposit boxes.
The main thing as we're asking that be removed, can't strike. And I myself.
I move the board approve Dr. Sunny Olson's open and made conveyance account and things about the box we found to have a plate.
Second.
Move in seconded. Any questions or discussion? That was also discussed in the finance committee. Can we have a roll call vote?
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
David Rado.
I'm staying.
Rachel Davies.
I'm.
Robert Tupperio.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is the approval of the student academic standards for the coming school year.
Just once again, Amanda Thompson spoke to that, that's an annual requirement for school boards.
So I entertain a motion for the approval of those standards.
I move the board approve the student academic standards as presented for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
Move in seconded. Questions? During that, can we please have a roll call vote?
Amy Litcher.
I'm.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
I'm.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Tupperio.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is approval of professional staff contract addendum for the coming school year.
This we also talked about at the finance committee. With the change in administrative roles, last year we added an amendment to Amanda Thompson's contract for director of curriculum and we're asking that we continue that role this year.
Entertain a motion to that effect.
I move the board approve the amendment to the contract of Ms. Amanda Thompson, elementary school principal, in the amount $20,000 for the additional role of director of curriculum to her existing position for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
Questions, comments? Can we please have a roll call vote?
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
I'm.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Robert Tupperio.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of academic eligibility for fall sports.
Typically, we use the fourth quarter academic eligibility, but with the way it's full ended and with many on a pass fail, WIA is suggesting that boards, state board, they still choose to defer the academic eligibility until the end of the first grading period of 2021.
I move the board waive academic eligibility grade performance for the Lake Mills High School athletes until the first grading period of the 2020-2021 school year. This is supposed to be legitimate.
Second.
Move in seconded. Questions?
I just think this is a great thing for these kids because they've suffered enough for the student athletes to do anything in the spring to get an option to, you know, if they didn't have a chance to correct some grades that they had coming into spring sports that were never there, so why penalize them again? So, by the seat.
Other comments? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Robert Tupperio.
Aye.
The next item is the approval of that. Approval of LCAT Stadium fee schedule.
This we talked about at the June finance meeting and our athletic director was in on that part of discussion. He did a nice job of outlining the fee schedule that is currently recommended.
And that schedule is for use of others rather than.
Correct.
Rather than the district.
Correct. And is it just for the stadium, the new stadium? Correct.
So I entertain a motion for that approval.
I move the board approve the LCAT Stadium fee schedule as presented.
Second.
Move in seconded. Discussion.
Well, we normally don't have a crowd, but I think this, what I will say is this fee schedule's in line with most, every school in Jefferson, Dane, the area that has turf fields. It can come in high demand, especially in the fall and the spring for soccer, when grass fields are not in good shape. And it allows us to have some discretion on who and how and when they use the field.
Especially when you're not in Dane County.
So. We were asked several times coming into last year in the playoffs for the stadium and it was just in mission to be used and wasn't quite ready now that we have it. Could be. So.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
I'm.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies. I'm. Robert Tupperio.
Aye.
Questions carries? The next item on the agenda is the approval of an agreement between the Rock Lake Activity Center and the Lake Mills Recreation Department, which is a part of the school.
This is a request to go and re-enter with our lack on a lease agreement for Club 55. We've been using one of the rooms in that building and it's been a really good working relationship and we'd like to continue that to the end of the calendar.
Entertain a motion to that effect.
I move the board approve the lease agreement for Club 55 with the Rock Lake Activity Center and the Lake Mills Recreation Department and ask for consent.
Second.
Move in seconded. Any discussion? And this was a topic of the facilities committee or the finance committee prior to this meeting. And we have a roll call vote, please.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
I'm.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Tupperio.
Aye.
And now we, the last item on the agenda for action is the approval of gifts.
I move the board accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for their continued support of the students and program of Lake Mills Area School District. A $100 donation for the elementary school's talk, read, play program from the Friends of the LD Parkville Library in honor of Carolyn Wade. Her memoriam plaque valued at $576.55 for the girls' state basketball team from Fibrodome. A monetary donation of $4,800 for COVID-19 relief funds from the United Way of Jefferson and North Walworth Counties. A $7,000 grant to the Lake Mills FFA to help support building an animal demonstration facility from the Jefferson County Wisconsin Farm Technology Days. And a $10,000 grant to the Lake Mills FFA for the construction of a new greenhouse from the Jefferson County Wisconsin Farm Technology Days.
Second.
It is always very impressive and very thankful for generosity the community provides for this school. I'll address for a roll call vote on accepting these gifts.
David Rado.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Robert Tupperio.
Aye.
Okay, the next topic is to discuss any future agenda items. Dr. Olson.
You'll see the final reading of the school handbooks and then really our attention will be really turned towards the reopening planning and finalizing the details associated with that. So otherwise, if once we get to that, there's not as many pressing things. Looking last year, you were working on a lot of construction items yet at this time and still taking bits. So it's fun to see a lot of those projects starting to wrap up. And those of you in the audience, if you didn't notice, you're working on the doors to the gymnasiums today with the wraps and so you'll notice that as you walk out. Seeing so much about the stadium, things that were. And we didn't have anything else depressing for the public except for the story.
Well, if I may, I think an agenda item that should be a conversation was brought up here tonight by our community, that we should have a conversation about that. I'm not advocating one way or the other, but I think it's a discussion to at least take into consideration and discuss what was brought to our attention. And you're suggesting that for a long this meeting, whatever, in a future meeting that we have that conversation.
If we schedule a special board meeting for July 27th in addition to the annual meeting.
That's, that's the time. I'm not particular to the time, but obviously what we saw here tonight deserves the conversation. How it shakes out is not, I'm not advocating one way, but I think we owe it to the community to have that conversation.
It's obviously Saturday.
And do we, do we have a tie established for that 27th meeting as suggested time?
It should be like, it'll be like 7:45, 8 o'clock. You know, we get budgetary from 7:00 to 7:30 and then annual start at 7:30. Not more than 20 minutes.
So we could take the time following that. You think 7:45, 8 o'clock would be suitable for it?
Yeah. Close that to, no, that's immediately following opposing of the meeting.
Yeah, so we aren't waiting for a particular time. That's a good idea. Is that, is that okay with everyone too?
Good.
And that, and that meeting will primarily to make a final decision on a plan for all schools operating this year.
Right, so we wanted to do a meeting next Monday to start just a workshop so that we could work through that with the administrators so that there are hopefully not a whole lot of questions by the 27th of January. We need to get things finalized so that'll, that'll give us some time to make adjustments to the plan if needed.
Okay, great. Would anyone care to move adjournment?
To adjourn?
Second.
Call motion, Kaylin?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?